For coming along. Today's meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to you all. I'm councillor Simon Clement-Jones and I'm chair of this local area committee. Before I ask the councillors to introduce themselves, I'll just hand over to our committee clerk to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point, if should there be one, is out there through the fire door there or back out through and into the car park. The toilet facilities are also through there and through the left. That's the disabled one. The other ones back out there at right and right again. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Can I ask the members and officers around the table introduce themselves from there?
Thanks. I'm Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleithers Valley Ward.
I'm Mr Ralph Netheredge in Sharrow.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Gleithers Valley.
Richard Shaw, Labour councillor for Beauchamp Green Hall Ward.
I'm Diana Owens. I'm the manager for the South Local Area Committee.
Alexis Diamond, Green councillor for Gleithers Valley Ward.
Steve Ayres, I'm councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Ian Auckland, I'm councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Sue Auckland, councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Nigella Bishara, Labour councillor for Netheredge and Sharrow Ward.
Thank you all very much indeed. Before we actually proceed with the agenda, I'd just like to explain how the meeting is going to work. We'll deal with the formal business first, any apologies, declarations and minutes of the last meeting. We'll then have some time for public questions or petitions. Obviously, I understand that there are a lot of questions around the Rose Garden Cafe. What I propose to do is hopefully take any questions that aren't around that first, so we can deal with those first and then move on to the Rose Garden Cafe issue. Following that, we'll have a presentation on the South Local Area Committee Community Plan, which, as I say, just an update on where we got to and where we're going to. We'll then have a presentation from Tina Weston, who's from Trading Standards Officer on the Not Born Yesterday campaign. And then obviously we'll have time for discussion after each of those items. So, if I can start with... Paul, just for absence?
No, received, thank you.
We have no items for the exclusion of the press and public. Can I ask if any members wish to declare an interest in any item on the agenda? No. And then we're on to minutes of the previous meeting. Can I ask if we approve them as a correct record? Thank you very much indeed. So, we're on to public questions and petitions. So, excluding Rose Cafe, is there anybody who's got a question for the local area committee? Sorry, apart from the Rose Cafe, excluding Rose Cafe. Thank you.
Hi. I see it's a question really particularly for Paul and Marion. I would like, first of all, to ask your opinion about the green space. Obviously, as the Green councillors, you have an emphasis on the green spaces in our area. To what extent do you think that drives your actions as local councillors in our area?
I mean, I think it's reasonable to ask any of the councillors if they want to respond to that, to go for that. But, as I say, Paul looks happy too, so go for it.
Thanks for the question. Yeah, obviously, we're Green councillors and we're environmentalists. The green spaces are really important. What I always say on this subject is that, you know, we're not here to try and save the planet for the planet's sake. The planet will outlive humanity by a number of years, I would have thought. We want to have a planet and an environment that's safe and good for people to thrive and live happy, fulfilling lives. And of course, those green spaces are an important part of that, and they're important for keeping our air clean, for having places to go and enjoy, and they're important to keep our biodiversity up so that we can look after animal life and plant life. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but, you know, they are important to us for those reasons. Thank you.
Sorry, could I just ask your name, please? Thank you. Sorry, we don't really want to kind of have backwards and forwards questions, that's okay.
Sorry, just one more question.
Oh, go, it's a different question, right, go for it.
The reason I ask the question is because I live in Mears Brook and you sit on the Planning Applications Committee, you did sit on the Planning Applications Committee and Local Authority Planning Applications Committee, and an agreement was passed to make a housing development at the top of Mears Brook Avenue, which totally decimated our biodiversity and our wildlife at the top. So, the top, the strip runs from Woodbank all the way up to the Crossside pub. That has gone. So, my point is, as a Green councillor, I wonder how you could rationalise the decimation of that long green space and replace it with a building site, which is also a violation of our Street of Residence and residential housing.
Yeah, okay. Just to clarify, I've never sat on a planning committee, I've not been, I'm not trained to be planning, a member on the planning committee, I've never done it, I've never been on planning at all. The reason, well, we neither supported nor objected to that development, but what we did was supported residents with their concerns and made sure that they were passed through the planning department and to the developers and the architects. So, I do think that some adjustments were made in response to concerns from local residents. I would say that it's, you know, in as far as developments go, it is kind of a development that we want more of. It's zero-carbon housing, it's on a brownfield site that's, you know, that's been up for sale for years, that nobody wanted to do anything with. I know that some of that green space is lost, but I also know that within that plan, within the architect's drawings, there is, there is space on that site to be retained as a public green space for the community. And I spoke to the developer and they want to basically hand that space, the space that they own, to the community. But again, you know, if you have problems, I'm more than happy to pass things on and mediate, but, you know, it's, it's not something we, we very, very rarely try to block developments and actually it's not really something that figures a lot in Gleithers Valley because it's, you know, already heavily developed.
Can I just add to that?
Sorry, I couldn't see you said that. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Go for it.
Thanks, because I think Hazel directed it at both of us. And just to say, I wasn't on the planning committee either. And what we did was passed on feedback from residents to the developer. That was really our involvement in it because we knew that there were some issues and we tried to facilitate the communication between local people and the developer.
Yeah, Hazel. Yeah, I'm also one of the councillors in Gleithers Valley. There was, there were things in the planning application that, such as tree retention orders, that haven't actually been adhered to. Access via Derbyshire Lane, which hasn't been adhered to. And these are things I've raised with the planning officers. I don't believe I've received a satisfactory response to these queries. There are some other issues that I've raised as well and that I have for residents. So, yeah, I don't think that we'll endeavour as a committee to try and get some responses to those questions. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you very much. First hand saw was there, second was there and third one was there, so I can ask you, sir?
Can you pick me up? Ernest Bruin, 152 Mountville Road.
Hi, Ernest.
Right. The proposed 20 mile an hour speed limit idea for Derbyshire Lane, which I think is a good idea, what I would like to happen is for the council to consider Harvey Clough Road and Mountview Road in a similar vein. We, it's very, very busy and very, very quick with teachers rushing back and forth to and from school. And the speed down that road, it's very difficult to assess, but it's well over 20 miles an hour. And it just worries me that, concerned me rather, that a lot of children are using that road for access to the school. And, you know, I feel it's an accident waiting to happen, but I'd just like the council to look into it if you would.
Certainly, certainly. Thanks. Sorry. Thanks very much for your question. I think councillor Auckland may want to come in.
Well, thank you, Ernest, for your question. It is included in the 20 mile an hour area-wide speed limit proposals, those two streets. It covers the area basically from Wormminster, Wormminster Road, Derbyshire Lane, Cherry Bank, Norton Lees, every Norton Lees Lane, so all within that area is included. There's still time to make a consultation response, so afterwards I can certainly give you the details in support of it. I mean, it is worth saying, the 20 mile an hour area-wide speed limits are not engineered speed limits, whatever the not humps and bumps, the lines and signs, and they're about, in my opinion, about reducing speeds overall towards, towards, towards 20 mile an hour, which is a much safer speed for all of us, and some roads are naturally lend themselves better to that limit. I would like to see some enforcement and the local police do some community enforcement. Unfortunately, there's no proper enforcement of these limits. I'd like to see that. I think that has a place to play, but at the moment, it is included in the proposals and I hope it goes ahead.
Thank you very much, councillor Auckland. We'll get you full details of that consultation and where we got to. Thank you very much. I had somebody, yeah, it was you, sir, at the back and then it was you at the front.
Thank you. My name's Martin Lawton. My questions, I've looked on Zapp map to see where the recharging points are to charge cars in council flats and maisonettes in the area, and I can't find any. Can you tell me what proposals there are within the council to provide charging points for electric cars in the flats and maisonettes in this area?
Thank you very much. I have to say, I can't, but I will certainly endeavour to get you details of exactly that and I'm sure it's somewhere. Thank you very much indeed for your question. And then you, madam, thank you.
I'd just like to say, is there any plans at any point that Derbyshire Lane can have some speed restrictions put onto that road? Because I've actually lived on there 26 years now, and in that time, the amount of traffic has increased ever so much on that road to a point now where sometimes you take your life in your own hands just crossing the road, because there's a blind spot near Prince of Wales pub, where if you're trying to get across the road, you can't see what's coming up. There's no crossing near on, and there's also a sort of a hump just as you're going back down Derbyshire Lane, past Norton Cemetery, over the brow where traffic can come over there at such speed, you've got to run across the road literally to get to the other side. And I think in all these years, it's been made worse by the fact that wood seats have had work done on there and they've had traffic lights put on, and all that's done has thrown the problem up Scarsdale Road and up onto our road now. We've also got the new housing area that's been built, that's creating much more traffic coming up and down Derbyshire Lane, and I think it's a disgrace to think that in all these years, they won't spend a penny on that road putting anything in place to reduce traffic from speeding. It's terrible, in my opinion. Needs something looking into that. It's fine that they've got the 20 mile an hour zones elsewhere, but we need something putting in place on Derbyshire Lane before there's another fatality, which it already has been some years ago, near the park at the top. Okay?
Brilliant. Thank you very, very much indeed for your question. Sorry, can I just ask your name?
Mrs Janku.
Thank you. Go for it.
Thank you very much for your question, and it does only just clarify, but perhaps in a little disappointing way for you, the 20 mile an hour zone proposal, which covers basically the entire Norton Lees area, Derbyshire Lane, Wormminster Road, does not include Derbyshire Lane and Wormminster Road itself and Hemsworth Road. There is a council policy going back to 2010/11 which sets out various hierarchies of speed, and the speed on those roads would be, would not really be reduced to 20 mile an hours or close to 20 mile an hour according to the research. If you want to provide your details, I can certainly provide you with the information. What my personal view is, is firstly respond to the consultation and say you think they ought to be included in the scheme, and you should have had a letter about the 20 mile an hour proposals. My personal view as a ward councillor after all this time is that we ought to see police enforcement of 30 mile an hour limits on some roads, and that would certainly, that would certainly be one beyond, beyond the community speed watch. The police have actually done some work on Derbyshire Lane with the, under what's called community speed watch, but that results in a letter being issued to somebody who's speeding, not necessarily a prosecution. So, I perfectly understand your, your point of view on this, and it's something to bear in mind. There are some humps and bumps, of course, up by the school, and I'm not absolutely certain there's a, that every ward is going to get these flashing signs that ask people to slow down, and there's certainly such a location on Wormminster Road, and I don't know, there might be one on Derbyshire, Derbyshire Lane, but that's another possibility, perhaps as traffic approaches that bend on that that you refer to at the top of Scarsdale, so it would flash, slow down.
Thank you, thank you, Ian. I'm going to bring you up, Paul, in, and then I'll go to the back and like to ask a question.
I have a question. I walk down Wormminster Road, I walk down Wormminster Road on a regular basis and Derbyshire Lane, and I feel that you're going to have to do more than just put a sign or a flash because they come down that road at over 40 miles an hour. If I'd had my phone in my hand, I would have taken a photograph of the car, and there was a lady further down with a child who was really upset because the road was quite close, there's no verge, and she was visibly shaken. You're going to have to do more than flash a light or put a 20 mile or 30 mile an hour sign up to make people be reasonable. I don't know, you know, who's going to answer that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I was saying, I think, you know, we're asking a general question about it. So, I'll bring in councillor Turpin and then someone would like to ask a question is next to you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, just quickly on the 20 zones, it is, it can be very, very frustrating trying to get road changes made, and they can be super expensive. We commissioned 20 mile an hour zone in Healy three and a half years ago and we still haven't got it, and at the moment, we haven't got it because we're disputing a decision not to include part of Healy Bank Road, and the reason for that is that the average speed is above 27 miles an hour, and so the logic says, cars are going too fast, let's make the speed limit lower and slow them down, but it doesn't work like that. So, if they're going, if the average speed's over 27, they won't put a 20 zone in. It's a parallel universe, quite often, you know, this council, well, probably any council. And so, I would just suggest, I've no idea what the silver pots are like in Graves Park, but if there's something in there, might be a way to find a cheaper painted crossing for one of those hotspots, but I don't have anything else to offer.
I'm a park manager, I'm actually my driving test, for example, you were told not to park on the bend or on the, on the ground.
Wonderful. That, thanks very much. A gentleman next to you wanted to make a point, and then I'll go to you, Joy, thank you.
My name is Charlie Kong. I'm very glad to be involved with this, but I'm also very sorry to say, nobody from the area we have any problem with are here. So, therefore, I would love to see that some of the councillors should get out and let the community know what is happening. I live on Belper Road, and it's nothing but trouble every day, parking, restaurant, footpath being narrow, prams, disabled person can't pass by, let you move out of way. So, please, please, Chair, many of it come round, give me a ring and I'll show you round the Sharrow and the Abidale area, the area where men concern, this group, far as I'm concerned, because I've been living in this area 1967, and nothing but more headache, more problem, children can't play, old person, I'm disabled myself and I can't get out unless I ask somebody to move. So, please make, especially the councillors live from that area, that area councillors, Sharrow and Netheredge, I hardly see them. When you ring them, leave the message. That's the message I get from them. They should be, when the election there, they come round knocking on your door, but when you want something to do, they don't want to know you. It's pity. When you stand in as an election, olden days, in 60s and 70s and et cetera, people used to come round, you can see your councillors any time.
So, I think this is about questions really, when they're kind of veering into kind of statements now.
I would have loved to see you personally, Chair, to come round, look at that area, because you're the one who makes decisions.
If only, if only.
You can have my telephone, but you can ring me, I'm disabled, I'm not working, and very important to see you in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much indeed for your question. As I say, I'm more than happy to come out and speak with anybody from the community who've got those issues, I'm sure, along with some of my colleagues. And so, more than happy to say, if that's doable. But was the question around parking, was that a main one? Pavement parking, thank you.
I think I hear the frustration. Being newly elected, I am familiar with the road that's just been mentioned, and I can assure you that some of those issues from that road has recently been shared with me at my first councillor surgeries, and the whole purpose of me putting myself out there at the surgery was to try to give residents and people more opportunity to be able to come and raise and forward their issues and concerns. Yes, I live in Netheredge and Sharrow, I've been an active member prior to councillor for 15 years, so I'm familiar with some, but I think listening to residents and people in the area gives me more insight to the level of impact it has on people, like the other ladies shared about this, the roads and the speeding and everything. So, I can assure you, I'm not just been just around Healy elections, but also actually playing an active part, and I've also, with the individual who's actually raised issues on that road, I've arranged a visit, even though I know the area, I think it's always best when issues are raised to be able to go back and have a look at the impact it has, so that's definitely taken on board.
Thanks very much, councillor Basharat. I've got councillor Grove.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question around parking. It is a shame that individuals living around that area seem to think it's appropriate to park on pavements, and I totally agree with you, I've been around that area quite often with my own child and struggled to get past on the pavement, and that's why I have been in contact with the head of Parking Services in Sheffield, and I've contacted the councillors that are part of that committee to get more enforcement throughout Sheffield. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Alexis wants to add to this at all or not, but I do think definitely more enforcement is needed. But in regards to a campaign around education, I think that's also really, well, something that could be done, and that's something I'm more than happy to look at. If you are on social media, I don't know whether you are or not, I do push out a lot of information on there. Unfortunately, I can't go around pushing out letters to everyone's letterbox, but definitely on social media, I'm happy to do that.
Sorry, if we just interrupt you, this is kind of getting into a discussion. I've got councillor Shaw who'd like to come in and councillor Diamond, and then I've got a question, I think, from Joy and a couple of other people over here, put their hands up. What I'd like to do then is bring the questions to a close and then move on to the, move on to the Rose Garden. So, if I bring councillor Shawry?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question and your concerns about pavement parking. Pavement parking's, it's an endemic problem across, you know, South Sheffield and, well, much of the rest of Sheffield as well, and that's why we've got, you know, a commitment to try and tackle, you know, pavement parking and keeping pavements clear and swept and accessible to, you know, all members of the community, so that people, you know, who are carers or mobility issues or need to take prams and stuff around the area aren't to, you know, aren't inconvenienced by people, you know, parking carelessly or selfishly. And that's, you know, that's in our community plan as a committee and is something that we're taking very seriously. Thank you.
Thanks for your answer, councillor Diamond.
Thank you, Chair. So, there is currently a pavement parking ban enforced in the city centre. However, this has not yet been rolled out to other areas in the city, and I think if you are in favour of a pavement parking ban, you should get in touch with the councillors to make sure that they are aware of your, of your feelings around this, because it is something that's really important. In the north-west of the city, there is police enforcement of unsocial parking, so if a car is blocking the road, which means that a disabled person or somebody with a buggy has to go into the road, that is actually enforceable by the police. However, in our area, unfortunately, it wasn't highlighted as a priority by local residents when there's a police consultation, so we don't have that in our area. So, again, I think raise it with the police, raise it with your local councillors, because if this is a priority, I mean, for me, I think there's no excuse really for blocking the pavement. So, yeah, I'd encourage you to get in touch. There is also a consultation at the moment about the council's grass verge strategy, and this does have some crossover with this because it's another place where people feel that they can park, and again, that could block, you know, it's, could block people trying to walk and also chairs up the grass and has a negative impact on biodiversity and our, and our local environment. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did want to move the questions on from, from the parking, but I know that we did identify the, and this is one of our priorities through our, through our local plan, and as I say, that's one of the things we need to be, need to be addressing, that we came back very strongly from that, so I don't quite know how the police missed it, but there you go. So, I've got, Joy, who'd like to ask a question?
Hi, I'm Joy Honor. I'm a resident of Greenhill and I work for the Termless Initiative. I just wanted to ask if there's any... I just wanted to ask if there's any flexibility within the Lax's community plan and budget to put in place some support with regard to the cost of living crisis?
I mean, I know that the council is looking at this and is looking at the role of the local area committees within it. I think specifically within the grants that we're giving out, that is obviously, you know, we want to do the most for those that need it. And this is, you know, the number one issue that these people are facing. So yeah, we want to support it through those grants. Excuse me. We want to support it through the works that the local councillors do, through the war pots and other things. So yeah, absolutely. And that's one of the things I'm hoping to see very soon is what else we can do through the LAC. Because as I say, it seems that, you know, through the pandemic, you know, we effectively had to invent this structure. We've got this structure now, we need to use it. So absolutely, yes, we're hoping that we can get involved and do get involved in what the LACO committee is doing. So thank you for that question. I've got this gentleman here and then this lady here. And then we'll get on to the Rose Garden Cafe questions.
Hi, my name's Dave Dolan. I've lived on Mount View Road now for 50 years. Is there anything that can be done on a Wednesday night to stop the parking of vans on the narrow peaks before the dog leg of people going to the Mount View pub? Because you can't get out of Mount View Road on a Wednesday night. Rest of the time, it's fairly good, but they come, they park, the big vans on and you just cannot get out. And it's going to be a real serious accident there.
Cracking. Thank you for the question. And I'm going to have to rely on some local knowledge or get back, I'm afraid.
Yeah. No, thank you for that question. I think it would be a good idea if we could have your details and we'll come and talk to you about it. And we'll pop down on a Wednesday and just see the issue for ourselves and see what, if there is anything that can be done. So before you leave, if you can just make sure we've got contact details for you, we'll happily come and do something about it, come and talk to you.
Thank you very much indeed. I'll take your questions, then your question, then I really will have to call it a day. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nikki Rivers. I'm a local resident in the area, but I also work at Sheffield and Robin Wilder Trust. Just about the grass verge consultation. I find it very frustrating. Loads of people have been complaining that there's no free text box to actually write anything. The way the consultation is designed, it's very black or white. I was involved in five year project, Living Highways Project with the council and Aimin University Sheffield, trying to improve the verges. And none of that's been brought into it. So I'm just really frustrated and there's not even any means in that consultation to write anything in it. So just the feedback on the consultation, happy to talk to people about that more later.
I saw some nodding heads there and we'll certainly get that feedback. Thank you very much indeed. And gentleman there.
Brian Hurst, I just want to bring up the subject of the closure of Hackthorn Road, which doesn't bother me either way. But the resulting chaos from there, the council seemed to have taken the highly technical system of putting up a queues lightly on the corner. And nothing else seems to have happened. The traffic lights are absolutely abysmal in terms of timing. If you have walked down there on a Saturday morning, they're queuing back up Derbyshire Lane. Does anybody, after they've made these changes, actually come out and have a look what the changes have caused?
Cracking. Thank you very much. I mean, I certainly hope they read their emails.
I just, so this is still under consultation until the 15th of November through something called Connecting Sheffield, if you're familiar with it. I'd certainly feed in your position on it because the more opinions that are gathered, the better. I do know the officer who leads on this tells me that they've done various things, looking at the traffic lights at the bottom of Scarsdale, checking on the timings to see if they can be improved in some way. Though you've got to bear in mind, anything that might improve things on the Woodseats Road, Hack, Woodseats Road, Scarsdale leg takes more time out of the A61 leg of the of the of the traffic lights. So it's a difficult balance to strike. Although opinions to me and to the consultation were very mixed on Hackthorn Road, but I say from my point of view, it's settled down. I seem to get more indications that people think it's working, at least on those roads, reasonably reasonably well. But of course, we're still in the consultation period. One won't to prejudice prejudice that. I mean, for the local residents there, it's an age old problem that goes back all my 20 years on the council about basically traffic cutting through there. So we do seem to have something that's gone some way to solve that particular issue for local residents on those on those streets.
Okay, thank you very much. So I've been that section of the questions close. Thank you all very much for the questions. If you, if we did say we'd get back to you, please make sure that we've got your contact details before you leave so that we can make sure we can, we can get back to you in writing. So before we, before we get into the questions on Rose Cafe, if I can ask the officers we've got here to introduce themselves, can we get a microphone for them?
Good evening. Nathan Rogers, head of facilities management.
Ruth Bell, head of Parks and Countryside.
Catherine McDougall, Graves Park manager.
All right, thank you very, very much indeed for coming along. So if I can ask for hands in the air for questions on Rose Park Cafe? One, two? Sorry, if you can wait for the microphone. Obviously, I think that's probably fair enough. But it stays. Thank you very much. I don't really need a microphone. I'm a big enough gob, as you all know. Please stand up if you're here to support the Rose Garden Cafe tonight. Thank you very much indeed. Mr. Chairman, it's 76 days, please sit down, 76 days since the council closed the Rose Garden Cafe in Graves Park with 15 minutes' notice and 12 people were put out of work. And it's 76 days of anger and frustration and upset that this has caused this local community. Graves Park is the biggest park in Sheffield. It's probably number 10 in terms of visitor attractions in the UK, according to our friends who've been researching this. It supports not just the south of Sheffield, but the whole of Sheffield and the whole of South Yorkshire. And that cafe throughout generations has brought pleasure and joy and a meeting place to families and walkers and dog walkers and children and parents alike. And Julie Collins, just standing up Julie, is the cafe manager.
Right, but I'd like to say on behalf of the officers present here today that we would ask that you do everything that you've been asked. We would ask that you support the campaign and we would ask that if you are able to put money towards it, that would be great. Because we also want the cafe reopened in whatever form that has to take. And we are committed to continuing to work with the two groups, the Friends of and the Save the Rose Garden Cafe group, to get this sorted. We're actually meeting again tomorrow to go through some of the detail.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Echo Ruth's comment. We'll share with the committee and the Friends of stakeholders, the programme of surveys and the propping. And as Andy said, the propping, we've got the final design today and should commence on the 24th. That's the date for that to start. And then we'll continue to work in conjunction with Brew Kitchens, who's the commercial operator of the cafe, to see, you know, what's possible over a period of time with the property in place and exhaust. You know, can we get back in there and operate or can't we for a period of time? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got, so there's a question there and then a question there. I'm sorry, and a question front there.
Hello, I'm Sue Lee. I'm the coordinator of Rambler's Wellbeing Walks Step Out Sheffield. And I've been involved in running walks on a Monday morning in Graves Park, one of the 25 walks that we do each week since 2005. And because of what happened and the way that it happened, I put in a formal complaint to the council, complaining about the way that the staff had been handled and also asking or petitioning, if you like, to say that this is a much, much needed facility for the health walkers. Because it's not just about walking around the park. It is very much about socialising and connecting and reducing social isolation. And so I have had a response from the council explaining what they're going to do. But it didn't really answer the questions that I had. Because when I petitioned to say how valuable the resource had been for our walkers, I said, could we please have a temporary facility that could be perhaps staffed by Julian and her people? And the response was, oh, we've been waiting for one of these carts to come, but we can't get a cart and the people that are going to run it until after the October holidays. And that immediately upset me because that means that Julie's not going to be involved at all or hasn't been involved in the consultations. And so I would like to know what's going to happen in the near future. Because as I understand it, it's going to take some time to get through the consultations, to get whatever is agreed up and running and open again. What happens to our walkers who meet on a Monday morning? We can't socialise after the walk anymore. We can take a flask of tea or what have you, but it's going to be very cold through the winter and next winter and the winter after. So please, what can you do for us?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's really difficult to understand what's possible or what's not possible until we've got the propping design. And as I said earlier, the propping design literally arrived about an hour before setting off for this meeting. Today, I've left a message for the representative of Brew Kitchens to meet, hopefully tomorrow or certainly the day after, to go through that design, see what's possible. Within the cafe, there's no propping actually in the food preparation area. But there's significant propping in the cafe area where people would sit to have their food and drinks. And there's also significant scaffolding and propping to the external elevation. I'm sorry, I haven't got a more in-depth answer than that. But until we've sat and looked at that, it's difficult to answer the question. There will also be a number of surveys that have to take place when the propping has been put in. If it's possible to operate within the area, we'll work with Brew Kitchens, a representative of the cafe, to do that sensitively. If it's not possible, then we'll be looking at other alternatives. Yeah, do you want me to go back to the beginning? Yeah, I'll summarise. So the propping gives us an ability to exhaust whether it's possible or not possible to operate the cafe with the propping in place. We've got that design today. We'll be talking to representatives of Brew Kitchens and the cafe over the next coming days to exhaust that. And then we'll know where we stand in terms of temporary facilities.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question from a gentleman here, then a question from a gentleman there and then a lady at the back there, I think. So sorry, was someone here, was it? Next question. Sorry, was it here? I can't remember. There was one this side and then the gentleman in the blue shirt there.
Hello, I'm Julie. I'm the manager of the cafe. Just want to say thank you to everybody that's come. It really does mean a lot. It was a day in August and me and some of my colleagues were just doing a normal day as usual, nothing untoward about it. And then we got a phone call within half an hour to say that some guys were coming up and they came up and gave us 15 minutes to get out of the building. We had a full cafe full of people. Consequently, it's been three and a half months now and nothing really has transpired very much, although we are now in touch, which we are very, very appreciative of. Things do seem to be moving. But I think it's the community that's got things moving. You know, there's lots of bums on seats here, a lot of the faces that I see, I see them twice a week, three times a week before. In the cafe, we've had 10 and a half thousand signatures on our petition to keep the Rose Garden. That didn't come hard. It was very easy to get those signatures. People were coming to meet us wherever we were to get to sign their name and show their support. So we just really need some movement here. Like people have said, it was a job for us, but it was also more a community space. We had the walkers here, people came in through, all walks of life. We had a lot of disabled people. We had great access, you know. The space was big, which is really unusual for a cafe. You could get prams in there, disability access wasn't a problem. And these people are now lacking where to go. And also the weather as well, you know. Coffee cart just won't do it, I'm afraid. Not in the, not in the park, it won't do it. It's more than that. And these people need somewhere to go and sit in the winter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And so I think I'll allow my colleagues to answer perhaps your question themselves. I had a gentleman in the blue shirt there want to ask a question and then a lady at the back.
Nick Williams. When I look through the accounts of the park, the major income streams come from rent from the cafe and from car parking. It seems to me rather stupid that if you've got the major income streams, I think it's £35,000 rent from the cafe. And a lot of the people who use the car park come to the cafe and the walkers come because there's a cafe and the runners like to use the cafe. So a lot of the people coming into the park and spending money are doing so because of the cafe. It just makes me wonder why somebody hasn't thought to take some of that £35,000 rent and use it for the maintenance of the cafe over the last decade or so. Because if you're trying to rent out anything, if you're trying to rent a car, you can't rent it once the wheels have fallen off. So you make sure they don't fall off. So why is it that nobody has thought to spend some of that rent from the cafe on actually keeping the place standing?
Thank you. I mean, I think obviously this is going to come out in the wash in the next, the committee meeting is considering this and looking into these very issues. But as I say, for me and myself personally, you know, I'm concerned not only about Rose Garden Cafe, but about a great many of Sheffield City Council's buildings that haven't had the investment in them over the years. And my concern is that this is, this is the beginning of a trend. And the council will just say, sorry, you know, we haven't invested in these things and they're going to need to be knocked down. So as I say, I absolutely would like to see, you know, what's happened. And I think, you know, it is an alarm call to Sheffield that we need to, we need to look at all of these buildings and all of these situations that we don't get this, where we have to get to this situation. So thank you very much. There's a lady at the back had a question. Thank you.
Ruth Goddard, local resident. A lot of my question that the gentleman before has just asked, but not only do they get revenue from the rent and the parking, there are the fares that they have. And it seems quite surprising really that, you know, like they can put up boundary fencing and marquee facilities at the drop of a hat. Well, not, no, sorry, it's not at the drop of a hat, it will be planned. But there will be equipment that they could put up there. But there will be equipment that they could put up there that will be in some kind of store somewhere. And as the gentleman said, the rent that they're missing and I believe, is it correct that they take a percentage of the profit is taken as well? So what you're saying is the council is just disregarding that. And I'm fully aware of raising funds, you know, which is fine. But over the years, I've done this for schools. I've done it for nurseries. And every time, the council's just gone their own way, knocked things down, got rid of them and disregarded what the local people want. People in this area, I've used that park, I'm 70. I can stand up, that building can stand up and somebody needs to go in. We are paying those surveyors, city surveyors. Are you telling me that I'm paying my rates and they're not doing the job properly? Why have they left it this long? And to be saying to somebody, you've got to leave in 15 minutes? It's a disgrace.
I don't know if I particularly want to respond to any points in that. But as I say, I think, you know, we do need to find out what's going on and certainly get to the bottom. I've got the lady in the green top in the middle. And if anyone else would like to ask a question, I'll then bring it to her home. So I've got one back there. And if there's anyone else, please tell me now.
Hello, my name is Caroline Dua and I am the Chair of Friends of Graves Park. And I'm putting this question forward having been Chair of Graves Park for 22 years and being in a similar situation to the situations I've been in for 22 years. I have serious concerns about the way in which the money is managed in Graves Park over the past 22 years, when we have spent 22 years trying to stop Sheffield City Council as sole trustee selling off bits of Graves Park. Before we were there, the Friends of Graves Park, there were another three or so years where Hands Off Graves Park spent three years trying to stop Sheffield City Council selling off parts of Graves Park. Now, sometimes those bits are big and sometimes those bits are small. But it's been overall a 25 or more year battle and so it continues. My question is, why is it that Sheffield City Council can find the money to put 16 parks and open spaces into green flag status this year? And yet Graves Park is totally disregarded, is creaking at the edges, is crumbling. It's a beautiful park, but the gates are not repaired, the walls are not repaired until people jump up and down and scream about it. When they are repaired, they're not always done properly. Where you have got bits around the lake, the pond, which are crumbling into the water, where you've got a cascade which is falling to bits, I have to say. And now this with Graves Park Cafe is like the last straw. And the way in which it was done, I'm sorry, Julie, you were wrong. It was not August, it was July. They closed it on the 28th of July in the first week of the summer holidays. You couldn't make it up. And my concern is, my question is, where do they find the money from for other things? And yet they don't find it for Graves Park. And if one more person tells me that the money that they make in Graves Park doesn't cost the total cost of maintaining the park, well, of course it doesn't. But the council has a duty to actually maintain that park properly, just as apparently it does for 16 other parks and open spaces to an extent that they get green flag status. And yet Graves Park would fall at the first hurdle. So why is it that they don't like Graves Park and they don't put money into Graves Park? And we still have a constant battle to try and keep it as partland? We are still, as Friends of Graves Park, battling to try and get permission to restore parts of Graves Park back to partland. This is part that was originally declared twice derelict and surplus to requirements. And when they were told they couldn't dispose of it and build a housing estate there, they promised they were going to restore it back to partland. And the Friends of Graves Park has restored the first two sections and they won't let us have the next section back because now they want to use it as a depot. And they claim it's depot land. And it's not. It is charitable designated partland. So my question again is, why won't you restore it to partland? Why won't you spend some of the money that you make on Graves Park? And it's all very well smiling, but I'm not smiling anymore because I've had enough. I've been spending all my free time. One more councillor tells me, not one's present, I have to say, how much free time they spend? Well, I spend my free time. I am not paid for being the Chair of Friends of Graves Park. And I have a family. And when I started trying to protect Graves Park, my daughter was a baby and she's now 24 years old. And I'm proud of what I've done for Graves Park, but there's a lot of times when I could have gone out with my daughter and my son instead of standing on a table, collecting signatures, trying to raise money, et cetera, et cetera. Now, that doesn't matter if ultimately we get our goal and we protect Graves Park and remember the person, J.G. Graves, who gave it to the citizens of Sheffield and what a great man he was. And it was named after him. And now we have a situation where we're trying to stop you from letting it crumble into the dust and become a shadow of its former self. So please, can you just get your finger out and spend some money on Graves Park? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I'd say thank you very much indeed for your question. As I say, we've certainly been involved myself in promoting the campaign, say, various bits of Graves Park over the year and have been certainly very concerned about it. And I'm sorry if you thought my smile was aimed at you in some smirky way. It certainly wasn't. I, as I say, you know, we, as councillors, across, I think, you know, I'm sure all love Graves Park as much as everyone else and want to see the best for it. And as I say, I've been shocked by what's happened. And I think, you know, one of the great things about it is actually the Friends of Graves Park have actually come to us with something practical to do. Not only, you know, not only asking for cash, because that's always the obvious question, but saying, you know, we want you to be more involved. We want the trustees to be more involved because that's the way to get, you know, to clear the air on these things, I think, in a certain sense. So, you know, I'm very grateful to all of you for coming along and making your case and long may you make it. So I've got a question right at the back. Sorry, I did ask me one, I'll ask a question after this one. So this will be the last. Thank you.
Marion Parkinson, local resident. I believe the council has a duty of care for everybody that it represents in the city. They say they have no money. If I was on the council, I would be extremely concerned that the poor people who were formerly employed at the cafe and associated jobs there would be wanting to make a retrospective claim against the unfair dismissal and the lack of health and safety that has gone on for very many years. Perhaps the council should think very carefully about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure the office wants to reply directly about that one currently. But we'll certainly see if we can get you some sort of response to that. So with that, thank you all very much indeed for your questions. As I say, if you did ask a question and obviously you feel like you should be getting a response, then we'll begin back to you. Sorry. So do you want to ask a final question? Oh, sorry, no, there's a chap behind me who was waving his hand, but I kind of closed it.
I would like council to look at the Belpere Road.
I'm sorry, you've already asked.
I would like council to look at the Belpere Road because it's getting worse and worse and worse, just like a bitch more. People parking on the footpath, all people living there, they can't get out of their bungalow.
Yeah, no, sorry, you did ask that question before. We will get back to you, give you a full answer. So with that, thank you, thank you very much. Which petition? The Belpere Road? Oh, sorry. Sorry, the second of November? All right, yeah. So obviously the petition for this will be going to full council for the second of November. Can I have called the questions to the point? And I will now ask my colleagues to come in. I've got Ian and, sorry, councillor, Orks and councillor Elliot, councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I've been a councillor now a long time and it was probably... Oh, yeah, sorry, Chair. Thank you. So it was probably the Hands Off Graves Park campaign all those years ago that got me involved in the council and quite possibly got me elected. And to some extent, I'm rather sorry to say that some of the decisions that the trustees have made over the years, which I've constantly entirely, absolutely and totally opposed, probably helped myself and some of my colleagues get re-elected because I am a not-a-blade-of-grass-shall-be-partied-with person and I regard the Rose Garden Cafe as a beating heart and symbolic of the entire park and the ward. With colleagues, I have the honour to represent. I hope that the passion though with which Caroline has spoken this evening, we can actually make something of that passion and that commitment, that unequal commitment to the future and protecting the legacy of J.G. Graves and the park. I think we can make something of that by moving forward to actually protect Rose Garden Cafe, to repair it, to renew it, to make it the best, greenest, most environmentally friendly park cafe in the entire country. And I'm heartened that the chief officer for parks has said that she wants to support the campaign and get the cafe restored and reopened. On a positive note, I know the request for money and although I think our budget might be somewhat spent, we do have something called community infrastructure level. And this can be used to support community facilities. It's what happens when planning applications go through and the developer has to pay some money to compensate the local community. So I think this could be a proper use of the money. We do have £10,000 in the Graves Park Silport. And you have to, this isn't a decision-making for spending money. So there's a process to be gone through. But subject to that process, we'd certainly be willing to chip in that money. However, some of our ward colleagues here from different wards are a little bit better off in terms of sil- uncommitted. But also I think as a matter of solidarity, because it's only a relatively small sum of money, they might be willing to chip something in from their own silports. But because Graves Park serves the whole of Sheffield, serves quite a bit of Chesterfield actually as well, but it serves the whole of Sheffield and at least three of the wards in this local LAC have a boundary with the park, on the edges of the park. But that's up to colleagues and I'd suggest that's something we can discuss in a members briefing that we have, we have sessions when we talk about this. But certainly we've got the money available in our, something called the Silport. So we'd want to support the campaign and to give our park officers some small resource to start the ball rolling because somebody has to start the ball rolling. Because I'm certain that this will require, I heard what people said about the money, but we are, we are sort of like where we are. I think that actually to make the building really good for the future, it's probably going to need an effort from the wider community, from the Friends Group and from the Campaigns Group to go to funders. Now, I'm sure funders won't pay to repair a building. They will probably say, well, you should have looked after it better. And I completely agree as the first call on the money is meant to be maintaining the park asset. So I certainly would agree with that. But I certainly think there's going to have to be an effort. And I'm heartened that there seems to be a much better degree of hopeful cooperation emerging between the service and the campaigners. As I say, I hope this could be a great legacy for everything that the Friends of Graves Park have put in and the campaign latterly. So that's up like to deal with the £10,000. There is, and slightly technical, but as a matter of trusteeship has been raised, I've long felt that the Graves Park charity is not run by like, some of the other park charities aren't like any charity I've ever been involved in. And I do favour local councillors being made trustees. At the very least, I would make the LAC responsible as trustees, or every, the local councillors here, to discharge the charitable functions of the Graves Park charity. And I would involve local people in the management of the park. But there is a provision in the council's constitution, this is a technical bit, and under Part 4G of the council's constitution, Area Committee Procedure Rules, paragraph 2.9, it is possible for the local area committee to refer to a committee of the council, any matter that has been discussed, as this item has been discussed at this local area committee meeting tonight. So I propose we exercise that right, refer the matter of the governance of the Graves Park charity to an appropriate committee of the council, which I think could be one of or all of the governance committee. There's a committee that's looking at how we've changed the way the council runs to this committee system and there's a review system of that in place. So that could be a place to talk about it. And there's something called the Strategy and Resources Committee. There's even something called a Charities Subcommittee, which some people might think I ought to be grateful about, but I'm not particularly because, as I say, I think the park charity should be run locally through the local area committees. But that could be somewhere for it to be chewed over. I understand it is going to meet shortly. So it's never met since May, but it's going to meet shortly. So I would like to propose, Chair, I hope colleagues will support me, in referring this matter on to the appropriate committee of the council along the lines raised by the Campaign Group.
Thank you, councillor. I mean, I've seen nodding heads, so I think it's okay to do that. It costs us nothing, might cost them something, we don't know. Thank you.
The money situation might be different down to the Graves Park ward, but we'll...
Okay, thank you. Okay, I've got councillor Elliot, councillor Shaw, councillor Ayres and councillor Basharat. So councillor Elliot?
Thanks for your questions. I'm not a councillor in the Graves Park ward, but I do appreciate that many people in Graves Park ward and the parts of the city use the cafe. It's very well used and very much loved. And that's clearly evidenced by the amount of people, you know, campaigning very passionately about it. So I fully support the campaigners and their determination to ask questions of the council to try and find out what has happened, but more importantly, you know, how to get it reopened. What we do know is that there is an agreement between the Leesee and the council which doesn't require the Leesee to maintain... which doesn't require the Leasee to maintain the building, but also the council haven't maintained it either. So that's a big problem. I would also like to see the council's charities subcommittee convene a meeting to discuss how they've managed their duty or mismanaged their duty and answer questions. With regards to the three asks, yes, absolutely, fully support the campaign. With regards to the contribution of £10,000, I am hopeful that the sil money from Graves Park Ward can be used for that and I hope that the ward councillors and the officers will discuss that. The call for councillors and local residents to be on board of trustees, absolutely. That sounds like a sensible proposal. And as councillor Auckland suggested, I think we should look into exercising 4G of the constitution so we can refer this on.
Thank you very much. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you everyone for coming and asking questions and presenting the petition. It's very clear that the park means a great deal to local residents, means a great deal to many people across the city and beyond. And I wholeheartedly agree with my colleague councillor Auckland in his support and his proposal. I've not been a councillor as long as him, but when I first came on the council, I was campaigning very hard against the sell-off of Coburn Cottage and latterly for the return of the park land to the Arboretum. And I share the view that Graves Park was gifted to the city, it belongs to the people and not one blade of grass should be sold off or developed. And I think local residents, local people, local councillors should be trusted with the governance and as trustees. And I would also, if it's all right with my other Beechfin Greenhill colleagues, I think we'd like to put £10,000 of our own sil funding towards the campaign, towards the project.
I'm not saying this in yet.
And whether other wards would like to chip in as well. And I think this committee should also go further and make an ask to the council to commit some of the unallocated citywide sil funding. So 80% of sil funding that comes in gets allocated to a citywide park. Only a small portion goes towards like local wards. So I'm sure there's some Section 106 money and sil funding there that could be put towards this very worthy cause. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Councillor Shaw, councillor Aries.
Yes, I don't know whether I need to say whether I fully support the contribution. Once the, once the costing is done properly, certainly the South Lac should contribute, at least 10K towards the project, the ongoing project to restore the Rosegarden Cafe in some form that is sustainable for a further hundred years to come. Clearly, I've supported the principle of the evolving, the powers that are currently undertaken by the Graves Park charity, hitherto in recent years, by the ten members of the council, most of the time none of whom have actually represented Graves Park Ward. And I think that it is endemic and it's been highlighted by the structural disrepair of the Rosegarden Cafe. And prior to that, I have to say Coburn Cottage, which was neglected due to the facilities not being turned off. Quick solution from the Graves Park charity was to sell it off, despite a very resilient campaign by the Friends of Graves Park, which the three ward councillors supported. And I think that the real solution to ensuring that this duty of care is undertaken properly, is given to the people, legally it has to be done through the local councillors, but working closely as a partnership with the Friends of Graves Park and the local community, who know the park best because they use it the most. In terms of the sharing the sil funding across the wards, I would remind colleagues that the park was in the top 10 this last week as one of the most used parks, particularly at this time of the year, from people across the city and across, well, it is a popular, it's a popular park used by not just from citizens of Sheffield, across North East Derbyfield. And so there is a case for the contributions from the other wards towards supporting funding, towards the restoration of the Rosegarden, to get it up and running as quickly as possible.
Thank you councillor Auckland. Councillor Basharat.
Thank you. I just want to say first of all, you know, thank you for bringing this to the lac and I think seeing the passion and the number of attendance. And also everyone who spoke, you can clearly feel, you know, the, how much of an impact this has had. And for me, just while this was in discussion and when I heard about it, obviously I've used the park and been taking many groups to the park as well. So I'm familiar with the level of positive impact it's had and comparing it out since being a councillor to our Mount Pleasant Park. And it was something that I looked around and I thought we could do with some sort of cafe like that. Because like some lady mentioned, when you do the walks and stuff, it's just nice to be out in the park, have a cup of tea and then just get on with a bit of walking. So it's such that it's come to this. And again, like somebody mentioned, I would also like to know a little bit more in terms of, you know, what happened. And somebody's mentioned there is obviously a committee system where the, who leads on certain issues and stuff. So I think, if I can remember, I don't know who mentioned that, I think it's important to raise it there as well, see what can be actually done from there. Some of the questions that have been raised, they can be raised there and get those answers. But I think the biggest thing for me here, I understand money is a big issue everywhere since stepping in and understanding our sil money and everything, but I don't see why we can't just have a discussion. Not saying that we probably can, but as you can appreciate, there'll be other similar situations with other community organisations who are putting things forward. But I think it means a lot, especially how you've actually put it across and how it's actually used citywide. So it's not just Graves Park, even though it's not my area, but I feel strongly about it, especially because of the level of impact it's having on people. And I think any community space which has been added value to people's health and wellbeing should be looked into quite seriously. And I think here we've all proved that as well. So thank you for sharing that, but I will take that vote as well.
Thank you very much indeed. Chair, due to the point of clarification, we're not presenting the petition tonight. Are we presenting it to the full council on the 2nd of November? Thank you. And councillor Auckland, Sue Auckland.
Yes, thank you. I think a lot of people here will know that we live local to the park. I walk in the park almost every day. I talk to people in the park about what's happened. And I don't really want to reiterate, go over things that have already been said about the history to it all and how appreciative we all are of the open spaces and how we all need somewhere to meet and to use as a community base. So one thing that, well, a lot of, all of it concerned me, but what concerned me a lot was the way the staff in the cafe were treated. And I think that it was really terrible, really awful that people were suddenly found out with 15 minutes' notice that their job was gone. A lot of those jobs are part-time, they're flexible to fit in with domestic arrangements and it was an awful situation and it's now 76 days. Now, I understand that negotiations are ongoing with Brew Kitchen, but I would like to ask the officers present to try to ensure that those negotiations keep going, that people are kept informed about what's happening and that from what we've heard, I'm not sure how quickly this cafe is going to be able to reopen. And we do have to look at an alternative provision. There has to be something in the park where park users can meet. And I would just want to ask the officers to make sure that those negotiations keep going and that information is fed back so that these 12 people know what is likely to happen to their jobs in the future.
Thank you. I'm going to take the nod. I was getting there as a commitment to that, so thank you. Councillor Rove.
Yeah, I mean, it is terribly sad to see what's happening at Graves Park and it's obviously mismanagement over many, many years. I am a bit concerned that other members in the room today talking, discussing about different monies being transferred over from different wards. I think that conversation really needs to, it needs to be a proper conversation to be had before myself or any of the members decide to take money from one ward and put it into another ward. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, absolutely. I think from councillor Shaw and in Auckland's point of view, talking about the sil money, I think obviously anything that goes through the lac has to go through that particular process. So obviously we'll follow it to the letter. Thank you councillor Rove. Thank you for keeping us honest. So yeah, if I can just bring that to the close. I mean, I say, I'm personally obviously very supportive of the whole campaign, along with my colleague councillor Shaw. Certainly look upon, you know, the sil as something that, you know, is there to benefit people of Beechfin Greenhill and the park is a great benefit to the people of Beechfin Greenhill if they can get across that road. So yeah, absolutely, we want to do this. And I hope that you've had some of your answers, your questions answered tonight. And as I say, if there is anything you want to do, obviously there's plenty of other opportunities to get your, to put your questions to both the full council on the 2nd of November and the various committees that we have that will all be considering this discussion because it is, you know, absolutely at the top. So again, thank you all very much for coming and thank you. We're now going to move on to, well, I'm going to swap over the... Very, very quickly.
Yes, very quickly. If the chair, please confirm then, how much has been promised as a donation to the charity event?
I mean, 20,000, all the rules being adhered to. Obviously, there are rules about how you can spend the sil, where you can spend the sil. But obviously, as I say, we've made that commitment from Graves Park and from Beechfin Greenhill. So as I say, obviously it's public money and we need to make sure it's spent properly. But as I say, the local councils, we can make the commitment currently tonight to do that. Thank you. So we've got a, so I'm going to swap the agenda around so that Tina can perhaps get off soon. If I can introduce Tina Weston, who is the Trading Standards Enforcement Officer. Yeah, grab anyone really.
Tina Johnson.
Okay, Grace. Yeah, so Tina's going to give a presentation on Not Born Yesterday. There is a scam out there for everyone. If you don't believe you're going to get scammed, then I'm afraid you are. So please pay attention and Tina's going to tell us how we're not going to get scammed. Thank you.
Yes, good evening everybody and thank you for coming along and thank you for inviting me. I'm not going to take long with this, so I hope some of you will actually stay and sort of just consider what I'm going to say. Now, I work for Sheffield Trading Standards and have done so for 20-odd years or more and there are a lot of scams out there. Now, you know, there can be all sorts of scams, telephone scams, rogue traders, that type of thing. So the Not Born Yesterday campaign is something that we've developed to try and sort of raise awareness for everybody. Like you've just said, there's a scam for everybody. It doesn't mean that whether you're older, you're younger, you're a business or whatever, nobody's immune to being scammed, even me. It can take anything really, you know, for somebody to be vulnerable. It can take a life experience that goes, you know, wrong, health issues, lack of knowledge, things like that. There's a lot of things at the minute, especially things around sort of green energy. People really not knowing whether or not these companies are selling the right equipment or right kind of things. The problem we get is the scams really emanate from telephone calls. I don't know if you've had them all, everybody gets them, I get them, anybody gets them. Internet, telephone calls and doorstep callers. What we're trying to say to people is please be aware that somebody calling you up, trying to sell you something, no thank you. Simply, no thank you. Do your investigations, do your checking. Somebody knocking at the door, trying to swap over your electricity, gas, that type of thing, that was a big thing at some point. Whether or not it is now, I don't know, but potentially it's, there's going to be a lot of scams going on. There's a scam for everything, basically. So be aware. Now, what I have done, I'm not going to keep you very long. I did have a sort of more, you know, detailed kind of presentation, but to be honest with you, it's quite late and people are wanting to get off. So obviously, you know, I want to keep it that little bit shorter. What I have done, and I think this is probably the thing that I want to get across, is left some of these little what we call Z cards. Okay? And what it's got is a free phone number for you or anybody to contact to get some advice about any consumer matter whatsoever. So if you think you've been scammed, if somebody's trying to sell you something you're not sure what it's about, if you get a telephone call out of the boot and somebody's trying to sort of say, well, you owe all this money, which we do get a lot of that, then give somebody a ring, check it out first and that's where you can get your advice. Not only do we want you to get this advice for yourself, but we also want you to actually look out for your neighbours, your friends, your family and anybody, you know, that you're in touch with. Please pass on this information. That free phone number is citizens' advice. If we need to get involved at Trading Standards, it comes through to us, we get everything. You can remain anonymous. If anybody's been scammed and they're worried about actually talking to somebody, please don't. Because we don't judge anybody, because we listen. The scams are, you know, difficult to deal with. They cause a lot of stress, anxiety and that type of thing. We have ways and means of how we can advise people to stop scams by telephones, definitely. We have ways and means of how we can advise people to stop scams by telephones, definitely, internet, and certainly doorstep callers, which we have a lot of, although they have declined in recent years. We have had a rise of nearly what was something like about 90%, up to 40% of people being scammed by telephone calls. It makes people worry about and anxious about answering the phone, and it shouldn't be in your own home. That phone is yours for family, friends, and to communicate in that way, not to deal with rogue traders or scam callers. So please, the number is on here, pick up the little Z cards as you're going out, pick up a few, pass them on, but talk to people, and please contact us. So I'm not going to go on any longer than this, because I know people are wanting to get off. But I also want to say that, from my point of view, I've lived in this area all my life and Graves Park has been an everyday occurrence, so I've loved it very much. Hope things get sorted out. Yes.
Yes, good advice, because I know why you didn't call. There's one thing you can do as long as people call. You know, when they tell you the name, and it quite clearly isn't the name, then there I go, you may look again, but it's changed the name, right? That might turn the phone after I've asked them about it, so that's a reality, and I received it quite well. But I have been using over the phone.
Yes.
Why did you speak, Bob?
Yes.
Right. I got asked a question, was I born in England? And I quite looked quite clearly, here I am, right? So I went past the police station down West End, and I put this policeman up, I says, what have you been asking about abuse of the ball? By the way, he says, oh, what do you mean? I said, have you had any nasty problems? Quite clearly, yeah. He said, well, why should I say this? Well, an Indian person over the ball. I said, this is all the captain of the bar, he says, oh, now this is your figure.
I think we're getting into anecdote now. I think we...
But if that means all the way down, I could have called them, you don't mean topping it, but I mean knocking on my door.
Well, I wouldn't do that if I were you then, so thank you very much. Has anyone else got a question for Tina? Well, or Gran?
That's a massively brilliant point, absolutely brilliant, because you're right, you should initially phone the bank, and especially if it's to do with a credit card or any banking details, you must call the bank immediately, because what they have the ability to do is stop those cards and stop those cards being used. Now, I can go on forever about, you know, how people get your details, how these things work, but we haven't got time for that unfortunately. You should, obviously, from your point of view, it's concerning that you need somebody to talk to. Bank first, always, 24-hour helpline, you've got on the back of your card, you have a number, you ring them up, you tell them you've got a concern, they put a stop on your card, they put a stop on that payment immediately, and the banks will do that, no problem. Then I would definitely contact, that's a free phone number, okay, but it's a citizens' advice that comes through to us, we'll always call you back, but that's a 9 to 5, Monday to Friday. You should call the police, definitely, after that point. But once your cards have been stopped, they've been stopped, and the bank there have done as much as they can to mitigate any kind of issue. My husband got his, my husband got his card scanned in Manchester Airport, and within probably about two hours, it got about three different accounts opened for the hut shopping kind of thing. That's within like two hours. He got back, he saw it, he cancelled the card straight away and it got done. If you're not into looking at your accounts there and then, or on a regular basis, it can happen. It's card scanning. There's a lot of this about, and as I said, I could go through this, you know, it'd take me ages to go through the kind of things that happen, but the main thing to do is, if it's involving a card, involving your bank, 24 hours, customer service, straight through, cancel those cards, work from there on out.
Gran, thank you. I've got a question just there, and then follow-up on you. Sorry, you first?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, just on the, I've got a quick question and then a point to make, on the banking, would you recommend the use of mobile phone banking apps because you can check things easily, or do you think that presents a risk if somebody gets your phone or whatever? That's my question, and then I've just got a quick point after that.
Yeah, the banking apps, I use a banking app, and they're absolutely secure. Having worked with NatWest and a lot of the banking organisations, they have a lot of protocols in their sort of organisations that are to do with cashback, chargebacks for fraud and that type of thing. My app is absolutely brilliant, I've never had a problem with it. If there is a problem, then you contact your bank immediately and use them from there. But I've, the encryption on the bank apps, and again, the banks will probably go through this a little bit in more detail than I can, because it's obviously their security, but they are very, very, very secure. So yes, the banking apps are great, and you can check your account daily, and it's quite easy to do. Obviously, not everybody can do that, and going into the bank on a regular basis or trying to get telephone banking set up so at least you can check your balances and things like that, it's really hard, because I'm quite happy to use an app, I'm quite happy to use my mobile phone, that's not everybody's preference, and it really is difficult, shall we say, for some people that are maybe a bit concerned about using those. So yeah, I get that, but you need to be in touch with your bank on a regular basis, definitely.
Yeah, and just so, there are still old-fashioned scams, like my uncle got, you know, con by some builders and walked to the cash machine and cash out, that kind of thing. But my other point was, there's also more modern scams, texting scams, social media scams. Somebody I know, I actually spotted it, his Twitter account was cloned, and it looked like he put out a post saying that his house burnt, the boat had burnt down, and somebody, you know, you know, people offered him money. So he didn't even ask, you know, the fake him, didn't even ask for money, people started offering him, and then he's like, oh yeah, can pay for me. None of it was him, I kind of spotted it, and, you know, so well-meaning friends had given this fake person something, so just, you know, there's a whole range out there, aren't there?
Unfortunately, yes, there are. It's massive, and it comes down to people contacting us, I think, if they've got an issue, because it is very personal, and the range of scams can go on and on and on. And it can be, it can be local authorities that have been scammed, it can be solicitors, accountants. You know, if I'm feeling vulnerable, not necessarily through illness or anything, but through lack of knowledge or something, I can be very vulnerable. So can anybody, anybody here can be vulnerable. So it's, you know, we have to really be very aware. And with the telephone calls and things like that, there are systems you can put in place which we can give advice on, and which we use with adult safeguarding and the police, which are extremely good at call blocking, but don't buy just anything, you need to get advice. And again, that's where the number comes in.
Thank you. And we've got you there, and then I think there was somebody at the back there, and then I think, maybe I'll probably like to come in after that, thank you.
It's Caroline Dure again. Just a couple of observations about what you said, and just to add to what you said about telephone calls. And I'd just say, if you are going to ring your bank, if it were me, I would want to make absolutely sure I was disconnected before I spoke to anybody on the bank, on the line, because what a lot of scammers do now is they pretend they've gone away, and then you think you're ringing the bank, and actually they're still on the line, and they put somebody else on who speaks with a very good English accent, and they will deal with your situation. The other thing that I would recommend that you get, when you said about your husband being scammed with this card, you could buy like a little credit card that you keep with your credit card, and it stops it being scanned. And the final thing I would say is, I'm still not confident enough to use my phone on mobile banking, because my husband used to be an IT technician, and whatever people can create, other people can scam. And when I'm using my mobile phone, that is a mobile signal. If I use my computer at home, it comes down a wire, and it's much more difficult for them to get in there unless I give them permission to go on my phone, and when they, or go on my computer. And when they ring me up and ask me for access to my computer, I tell them I'll go and log on to my computer, and then I put my phone down and leave them waiting, and I go and do something else. And the last time, the first time I did it, it was 25 minutes before they finally gave up. Last time was only nine, so I think they're getting the message.
Hello, I'm Tina Wright. I just want to tell you about one that I had, that I know has been going around, and that was, my son works away, and I got a text message where he usually uses WhatsApp, and it said, mum, I broke my phone, I'm contacting you from a friend's phone, can you ring me on this number? Which I knew wasn't his number. So I gave him a phone call on his phone, and he said, no mum, I haven't done that. But if I ever done, then I would have been in trouble following that phone number. Also, I heard this morning on a police thing, I can't remember the number they gave out though, but if you have a text that you're sure isn't genuine, like the one about the government grants which is going about, and they give you a link to click on, and you don't think that's right, there is actually a number, you can forward that to, I don't know if you know that number, but I just can't remember the number they gave out this morning.
Yeah, sorry, I think those were brilliant points to be made, absolutely fantastic. It just shows you the level of the scams that you get. Now, I mean, with the banking, it's how you feel about it. I know the encryptions and stuff like that they use are pretty good, but like anything, there's always a way round, there's always somebody there trying to work round things. And with like the telephone calls and things like that, and using, like ringing your bank, like you said, putting the phone down, making sure they've hung up, never ever ring a number that somebody's giving you over the phone, always ring the number on the back of your card. The simple thing is, is like you don't trust anything that comes through, it's no thank you, no thank you. Get a call blocker, somebody comes to your door selling something, no thank you, ring us if you're worried, if you get something on the phone you're not sure about, again, no thank you, give me your details, check it out with us before you reply, simply put the phone down. With internet, it's again a minefield, very difficult, and again, it could take ages to go through the security protocols. Actually, the university students at Sheffield were brilliant at doing a little seminar for us, so it would be absolutely great for us to go through that again. But yeah, it is really difficult, and we haven't unfortunately got enough time at this moment in time for me to go through things and, you know, like the sort of types of scams that we have. I mean, what I would like to do in future is maybe sort of get some more specifics and go through something a little bit more specific, like internet banking. For instance, a lot of the banks now will do, people that come out and do a chat about how the banking works, and that's from a bank point of view, and they're really good at it. But what we'll do now, if there's any more questions, fine, but if anybody wants to get adverse, advice on anything, there's a telephone number, free phone, mobiles and landline, and our email address. But, you know, hopefully, it's just trying to raise that awareness. So I'll leave that for now, because we've had a long evening.
Great.
Thank you.
And thank you all very much indeed, Tina. Yeah, we were going to have a presentation on our South Black Community Plan, I think we'll leave that for next time. So really, it just needed for me to thank you all very, very much indeed for attending and for getting involved in our local area committee. I hope you found it useful. If you haven't signed up for our mailing list, please speak to one of our officers on your way out. Next meeting, 12th of January, somewhere in Glens Valley.
These are on, oh, sorry, these are on the back, by the way.
Yep, grab yourself some of these at the back.
Sorry, Anya, anyway.
No worries, no worries, cheers.
Right, but I'd like to say on behalf of the officers present here today that we would ask that you do everything that you've been asked, we would ask that you support the campaign, and we would ask that if you are able to put money towards it, that would be great, because we also want the cafe reopened in whatever form that has to take, and we are committed to continuing to work with the two groups, the Friends of and the Save the Rose Garden Cafe group, to get this sorted. We're actually meeting again tomorrow to go through some of the detail.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Echo Ru's comment, we'll share with the committee and the Friends of stakeholders, the programme of surveys and the propping, and as Andy said, the propping, we've got the final design today and should commence on the 24th, that's the date for that to start, and then we'll continue to work in conjunction with Brew Kitchens, who's the commercial operator of the cafe, to see, you know, what's possible over a period of time with the property in place and exhaust, you know, can we get back in there and operate or can't we for a period of time? Thank you.
Oh, kudo, thank you very much. I've got, sorry, there's a question there, and then a question there, I'm sorry, and a question front there.
Hello, I'm Sue Lee, I'm the coordinator of Rambler's Wellbeing Walks Step Out Sheffield, and I've been involved in running walks on a Monday morning in Graves Park, one of the 25 walks that we do each week since 2005. And because of what happened and the way that it happened, I put in a formal complaint to the council, complaining about the way that the staff had been handled, and also asking or petitioning, if you like, to say that this is a much, much needed facility for the health walkers, because it's not just about walking around the park, it is very much about socialising and connecting and reducing social isolation. So I have had a response from the council explaining what they're going to do, but it didn't really answer the questions that I had, because when I petitioned to say how valuable the resource had been for our walkers, I said, could we please have a temporary facility that could be perhaps staffed by Julian and her people? And the response was, oh, we've been waiting for one of these carts to come, but we can't get a cart and the people that are going to run it until after the October holidays. get a cart and the people that are going to run it until after the October holidays." And that immediately upset me because that means that Julie's not going to be involved at all or hasn't been involved in the consultations. So I would like to know what's going to happen in the near future because as I understand it, it's going to take some time to get through the consultations, to get whatever is agreed up and running and open again. What happens to our walkers who meet on a Monday morning? We can't socialise after the walk anymore. We can take a flask of tea or what have you, but it's going to be very cold through the winter and next winter and the winter after. So please, what can you do for us?
Thank you.
It's really difficult to understand what's possible or what's not possible until we've got the propping design. And as I said earlier, the propping design literally arrived about an hour before setting off for this meeting. Today I've left a message for the representative of Brew Kitchens to meet, hopefully tomorrow or certainly the day after, to go through that design, see what's possible. Within the cafe, there's no propping actually in the food preparation area, but there's significant propping in the cafe area where people would sit to have their food and drinks. And there's also significant scaffolding and propping to the external elevation. I'm sorry, I haven't got a more in-depth answer than that, but until we've sat and looked at that, it's difficult to answer the question. There will also be a number of surveys that have to take place when the propping has been put in. If it's possible to operate within the area, we'll work with Brew Kitchens, the representative of the cafe, to do that sensitively. If it's not possible, then we'll be looking at other alternatives.
Can you please speak up, I hear you?
Yeah, do you want me to go back to the beginning? Yeah, I'll summarize. So the propping gives us an ability to exhaust whether it's possible or not possible to operate the cafe with the propping in place. We've got that design today, we'll be talking to representatives of Brew Kitchens and the cafe over the next coming days to exhaust that and then we'll know where we stand in terms of temporary facilities.
Okay, thank you. A question gentleman here, then a question gentleman there and then a lady at the back there, I think. So sorry, was someone here, was it? Next question. Sorry, was it here? I can't remember. There was one this side and then the gentleman in the blue shirt there.
Hello, I'm Julie. I'm the manager of the cafe. Just want to say thank you to everybody that's come, it really does mean a lot. It was a day in August and me and some of my colleagues were just doing a normal day as usual, nothing untoward about it. And then we got a phone call within half an hour to say that some guys were coming up and they came up and gave us 15 minutes to get out of the building. We had a full cafe full of people. Consequently, it's been three and a half months now and nothing really has transpired very much, although we are now in talks, which we are very, very appreciative of. Things do seem to be moving, but I think it's the community that's got things moving. You know, there's lots of bums on seats here, a lot of the faces that I see, I see them twice a week, three times a week before. In the cafe, we've had 10 and a half thousand signatures on our petition to keep the Rose Garden. That didn't come hard, it was very easy to get those signatures. People were coming to meet us wherever we were to get to sign their name and show their support. So we just really need some movement here. Like people have said, it was a job for us, but it was also more a community space. We had the walkers here, people came in through, all walks of life. We had a lot of disabled people, we had great access, you know, the space was big, which is really unusual for a cafe. You could get prams in there, disability access wasn't a problem. And these people are now lacking where to go and also the weather as well, you know, coffee cart just won't do it, I'm afraid, not in the park, it won't do it, it's more than that. And these people need somewhere to go and sit in the winter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And so I think I'll allow my colleagues to answer perhaps your question themselves. I had a gentleman in the blue shirt there want to ask a question and then a lady at the back.
Nick Williams. When I look through the accounts of the park, the major income streams come from rent from the cafe and from car parking. It seems to me rather stupid that if you've got the major income streams, I think it's £35,000 rent from the cafe and a lot of the people who use the car park come for the cafe and the walkers come because there's a cafe and the runners like to use the cafe. So a lot of the people coming into the park and spending money are doing so because of the cafe. It just makes me wonder why somebody hasn't thought to take some of that £35,000 rent and use it for the maintenance of the cafe over the last decade or so. Because if you're trying to rent out anything, if you're trying to rent a car, you can't rent it once the wheels have fallen off, so you make sure they don't fall off. So why is it that nobody has thought to spend some of that rent from the cafe on actually keeping the place standing?
Thank you. I mean, I think obviously this is going to come out in the washing, the next committee meeting is considering this and looking into these very issues. But I say, for me myself personally, you know, I'm concerned not only about the Rose Garden Cafe, but about a great many of Sheffield City Council's buildings that haven't had the investment in them over the years. And my concern is that this is the beginning of a trend and that the council will just say, "Sorry, you know, we haven't invested in these things and they're going to need to be knocked down." So as I say, I absolutely would like to see, you know, what's happening. I think, you know, it is an alarm call to Sheffield that we need to, we need to look at all of these buildings and all of these situations that we don't get this, where we have to get to this situation. So thank you very much. There's a lady at the back with a question. Thank you.
A lot of my question that the gentleman before has just asked, but not only do they get revenue from the rent and the parking, there are the fares that they have. And it seems quite surprising really that, you know, like they can put up boundary fencing and marquee facilities at the drop of a hat, well, not, no, sorry, it's not at the drop of a hat, it will be planned, but there will be equipment that they could put up there that will be in some kind of store somewhere. And as the gentleman said, the rent that they're missing and I believe, is it correct that they take a percentage of the profit is taken as well? So what you're saying is the council is just disregarding that. And I'm fully aware of raising funds, you know, which is fine, but over the years, I've done this for schools, I've done it for nurseries and every time, the council's just gone their own way, knocked things down, got rid of them and disregarded what the local people want. People in this area, I've used that park, I'm 70, I can stand up, that building can stand up and somebody needs to go in. We are paying those surveyors, city surveyors. Are you telling me that I'm paying my rates and they're not doing the job properly? Why have they left it this long? And to be saying to somebody, "You've got to leave in 15 minutes", it's a disgrace.
I mean, thank you. I don't know if I particularly want to respond to any points in that, but as I say, I think, you know, we do need to find out what's going on and certainly get to the bottom. I've got the lady in the green top in the middle. And if anyone else who would like to ask a question, I'll then bring it to her, I hope. So I've got one back there and if there's anyone else, please tell me now.
Hello, my name is Caroline Dure and I am the Chair of Friends of Graves Park. And I'm putting this question forward, having been Chair of Graves Park for 22 years and being in a similar situation to the situations I've been in for 22 years. I have serious concerns about the way in which the money is managed in Graves Park over the past 22 years, when we have spent 22 years trying to stop Sheffield City Council as sole trustee selling off bits of Graves Park. Before we were there, the Friends of Graves Park, there were another three or so years where Hands Off Graves Park spent three years trying to stop Sheffield City Council selling off parts of Graves Park. Now, sometimes those bits are big and sometimes those bits are small, but it's been overall a 25 or more year battle and so it continues. My question is, why is it that Sheffield City Council can find the money to put 16 parks and open spaces into green flag status this year and yet Graves Park is totally disregarded, is creaking at the edges, is crumbling? It's a beautiful park, but the gates are not repaired, the walls are not repaired until people jump up and down and scream about it. When they are repaired, they're not always done properly. Where you have got bits around the lake, the pond, which are crumbling into the water, where you've got a cascade which is falling to bits, I have to say. And now this with Graves Park Cafe is like the last straw. And the way in which it was done, I'm sorry Julie, you were wrong, it was not August, it was July. They closed it on the 28th of July in the first week of the summer holidays. You couldn't make it up. And my concern is, my question is, where do they find the money from for other things? And yet they don't find it for Graves Park. And if one more person tells me that the money that they make in Graves Park doesn't cost the total cost of maintaining the park, well, of course it doesn't. But the council has a duty to actually maintain that park properly, just as apparently it does for 16 other parks and open spaces to an extent that they get green flag status. And yet Graves Park would fall at the first hurdle. So why is it that they don't like Graves Park and they don't put money into Graves Park and we still have a constant battle to try and keep it as partland? We are still, as Friends of Graves Park, battling to try and get permission to restore parts of Graves Park back to partland. This is part that was originally declared twice, derelict and surplus to requirements. And when they were told they couldn't dispose of it and build a housing estate there, they promised they were going to restore it back to partland. And the Friends of Graves Park has restored the first two sections and they won't let us have the next section back because now they want to use it as a depot and they claim it's depot land and it's not. It is charitable designated partland. So my question again is, why won't you restore it to partland? Why won't you spend some of the money that you make on Graves Park? And it's all very well smiling, but I'm not smiling anymore because I've had enough. I've been spending all my free time, if one more councillor tells me, not one's present, I have to say, how much free time they spend. Well, I spend my free time. I am not paid for being the Chair of Friends of Graves Park and I have a family. And when I started trying to protect Graves Park, my daughter was a baby and she's now 24 years old. And I'm proud of what I've done for Graves Park, but there's a lot of times when I could have gone out with my daughter and my son instead of standing on a table, collecting signatures, trying to raise money, et cetera, et cetera. Now, that doesn't matter if ultimately we get our goal and we protect Graves Park and remember the person, J.G. Graves, who gave it to the citizens of Sheffield and what a great man he was. And it was named after him. And now we have a situation where we're trying to stop you from letting it crumble into the dust and become a shadow of its former self. So please, can you just get your finger out and spend some money on Graves Park? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And as I say, thank you very much indeed for your question. As I say, we've certainly been involved myself in promoting the campaign to save various bits of Graves Park over the year and have been certainly very concerned about it. And I'm sorry if you thought my smile was aimed at you in some smirky way, it certainly wasn't. I, as I say, you know, we as councillors across, I'm sure all love Grove Park as much as everyone else and want to see the best of it. And as I say, have been shocked by what's happened. And I think, you know, one of the great things about it is actually the Friends of Graves Park have actually come to us with something practical to do, not only, you know, not only asking for cash, because that's always the obvious question, but saying, you know, we want you to be more involved, we want the trustees to be more involved because that's the way to get, you know, to clear the air on these things, I think, in a certain sense. So, you know, I'm very grateful to all of you for coming along and making your case and long may you make it. So I've got a question right at the back. So I did ask anyone else had a question after this one, so this will be the last. Thank you.
Marion Parkinson, local resident. I believe the council has a duty of care for everybody that it represents in the city. They say they have no money. If I was on the council, I would be extremely concerned that the poor people who were formerly employed at the cafe and associated jobs there would be wanting to make a retrospective claim against the unfair dismissal and the lack of health and safety that has gone on for very many years. Perhaps the council should think very carefully about this. Thank you.
I'm not sure the officers want to reply directly about that one currently, but we'll certainly see if we can get you some sort of response to that. So with that, thank you all very much indeed for your questions. As I say, if you did ask a question and obviously you feel like you should be getting a response, then we'll begin back to you. Sorry. Sorry, do you want to ask a final question?
I did want to.
Oh, sorry, no, there's a chap behind me who was raising his hand, but I kind of closed it.
I would like council to look at the Belpar Road.
I'm sorry, you've already asked.
I would like council to look at the Belpar Road because it's getting worse and worse and worse, just like a bitch more. People parking on the footpath, all people living there, they can't get out of their bungalow.
Yeah, no, so you did ask that question before, we will get back to you, give you a full answer. So with that, thank you, thank you very much. Which petition? The Belpar Road? Oh, sorry. Sorry, the second of November. All right, yeah, so obviously the petition for this will be going to full council for the second of November. Can I have called the questions to the point and I will now ask my colleagues to come in. I've got Ian and, sorry councillor, Auckland councillor area, councillor Shaw. We've got Ian, and, sorry councillor Auckland, councillor Elliot, councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I've been a councillor now a long time, and it was probably... Oh, yeah, sorry, Chair. Thank you. So it was probably the Hands Off Graves Park campaign all those years ago that got me involved in the council, and quite possibly got me elected. And to some extent, I'm rather sorry to say that some of the decisions that the trustees have made over the years, which I've constantly entirely, absolutely, totally opposed, probably helped myself and some of my colleagues get re-elected, because I am not a blade of grass shall be parted with person, and I regard the Rose Garden Cafe as a beating heart and symbolic of the entire park and the ward with colleagues I have the honour to represent. I hope that the passion though with which Caroline has spoken this evening, we can actually make something of that passion and that commitment, that unequal commitment to the future and protecting the legacy of J.G. Graves and the park. I hope we can make something of that by moving forward to actually protect Rose Garden Cafe, to repair it, to renew it, to make it the best, greenest, most environmentally friendly park cafe in the entire country. And I'm heartened that the Chief Officer for Parks has said that she wants to support the campaign and get the cafe restored and reopened. On a positive note, I know the request for money, and although I think our budget might be somewhat spent, we do have something called community infrastructure level. And this can be used to support community facilities. It's what happens when planning applications go through and the developer has to pay some money to compensate the local community. So I think this could be a proper use of the money. We do have £10,000 in the Graves Park Sil Port, and you have to, this isn't a decision making for spending money, so there's a process to be gone through, but subject to that process, we'd certainly be willing to chip in that money. However, some of our ward colleagues here from different wards are a little bit better off in terms of sil uncommitted, but also I think as a matter of solidarity, because it's only a relatively small sum of money, they might be willing to chip something in from their own sil pots. But because Graves Park serves the whole of Sheffield, serves quite a bit of Chesterfield actually as well, but it serves the whole of Sheffield, and at least three of the wards in this local lack have a boundary with the park, on the edges of the park. But that's up to colleagues, and I'd suggest that's something we can discuss in members' briefing that we have, we have sessions when we talk about this. But certainly, we've got the money available in our something called the Sil Port. So we'd want to support the campaign and to give our park officers some small resource to start the ball rolling, because somebody has to start the ball rolling. Because I'm certain that this will require, I heard what people said about the money, but we are, we are sort of like where we are. I think that actually to make the building really good for the future, it's probably going to need an effort from the wider community, from the Friends Group and from the campaigns group to go to funders. Now, I'm sure funders won't pay to repair a building, they will probably say, well, you should have looked after it better, and I completely agree, as the first call on the money is meant to be maintaining the park asset. So I certainly would agree with that, but I certainly think there's going to have to be an effort. And I'm heartened that there seems to be a much better degree of hopeful cooperation emerging between the service and the campaigners. As I say, I hope this could be a great legacy for everything that the Friends of Graves Park have put in, and the campaign latterly. So that's what I'd like to deal with the £10,000. There is, and slightly technical, but as a matter of trusteeship has been raised, I've long felt that the Graves Park charity is not run by like, and some of the other park charities aren't run by like any charity I've ever been involved in. And I do favour local councillors being made trustees at the very least, so I would make the lack responsible as trustees, or every, the local councillors here, to discharge the charitable functions of the Graves Park charity. And I would involve local people in the management of the park. But there is a provision in the council's constitution, this is a technical bit, and under Part 4G of the council's constitution, Area Committee Procedure Rules, paragraph 2.9, it is possible for the local area committee to refer to a committee of the council, any matter that has been discussed, as this item has been discussed, at this local area committee meeting tonight. So I propose we exercise that right, refer the matter of the governance of the Graves Park charity to an appropriate committee of the council, which I think could be one of or all of the governance committee. There's a committee that's looking at how we've changed the way the council runs to this committee system, and there's a review system of that in place, so that could be a place to talk about it. And there's something called the Strategy and Resources Committee. There's even something called a Charity Subcommittee, which some people might think I ought to be grateful about, but I'm not particularly, because as I say, I think the park charities should be run locally through the local area committees, but that could be somewhere for it to be chewed over. I understand it is going to meet shortly. So it's never met since May, but it's going to meet shortly. So I would like to propose, Chair, I hope colleagues will support me, in referring this matter on to the appropriate committee of the council, all underlines raised by the campaign group.
Thank you, councillor Auckland. I mean, I've seen nodding heads, so I think it's okay to do that, it costs us nothing, might cost them something, we don't know, thank you.
The money situation might be different, down to the Graves Park Ward, but we'll...
Okay, thank you. Okay, I've got councillor Elliot, councillor Shaw, councillor Aries, and councillor Basharat. So councillor Elliot?
Thanks for your questions. I'm not a councillor in Graves Park Ward, but I do appreciate that many people in Graves Park Ward and with the parts of the city use the cafe, it's very well used and very much lost, and that's clearly evidenced by the amount of people campaigning very passionately about it. So I fully support the campaigners and their determination to ask questions of the council, to try and find out what has happened, but more importantly, you know, how to get it reopened. What we do know is that there is an agreement between the Leithie and the council, which doesn't require the Leithie to maintain the building, but also the council haven't maintained it either, so that's a big problem. I would also like to see the council's Charity Subcommittee convene a meeting to discuss how they've managed their duty or mismanaged their duty, and answer questions. With regards to the three asks, yes, absolutely, fully support the campaign. With regards to the contribution of £10,000, I am hopeful that the sil money from Graves Park Ward can be used for that, and I hope that the ward councillors and the officers will discuss that. The call for councillors and local residents to be on board of trustees, absolutely, that sounds like a sensible proposal. And as councillor Auckland suggested, I think we should look into exercising 4G of the constitution, so we can refer this on.
Thank you very much. Councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Chair, and thank you everyone for coming and asking questions and presenting the petition. It's very clear that the park means a great deal to local residents, means a great deal to many people across the city and beyond. And I wholeheartedly agree with my colleague councillor Auckland in his support and his proposal. I've not been a councillor as long as him, but when I first came on the council, I was, you know, campaigning very hard against the sell-off of Coburn Cottage, and, you know, latterly, you know, for the return of, you know, the parkland to the Arboretum. And, you know, I share the view that, you know, Graves Park was gifted to the city, it belongs to the people, and, you know, not one blade of grass should be, you know, sold off or, you know, developed. And I think local residents, local people, local councillors should be trusted with the, you know, governance and as trustees. And I would also, if it's all right with my other Beechfin Green Hill colleagues, I think we'd like to put £10,000 of our own sil funding towards the campaign, towards the project. I'm not saying anything yet. And, you know, whether other wards would like to chip in as well. And I think this committee should also go further and make an ask, you know, to the council to commit some of the unallocated citywide sil funding. So 80% of sil funding that comes in gets allocated to a citywide park, only a small proportion goes towards like local wards. So I'm sure there's some Section 106 money and sil funding there that could be put towards this very worthy cause. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw, councillor Aries?
Yes, I don't know whether I need to say, well, I fully support the contribution of, you know, once the, once the costing is properly done properly, that, you know, certainly the South Lap should contribute, at least 10K towards the project, the ongoing project to restore the Rose Garden Cafe in some form that is sustainable for a further 100 years to come. Clearly, I've supported the principle of devolving the powers that are currently undertaken by the Graves Park charity, hitherto in recent years, by the, by 10 members of the council, most of the time none of whom have actually represented Graves Park Ward. And I think that it is endemic, and it's been highlighted by the structural disrepair of the Rose Garden Cafe, and prior to that, I have to say Coburn Cottage, which was neglected due to the facilities not being turned off. Quick solution from the Graves Park charity was to sell it off, despite a very resilient campaign by the Friends of Graves Park, which the three ward councillors supported. And I think that the real solution to ensuring that this duty of care is undertaken properly is given to the people, legally it has to be done through the local councillors, but working closely as a partnership with the Friends of Graves Park and the local community, who know the park best because they use it the most. In terms of the sharing the sil funding across the wards, I would remind colleagues that the park was in the top 10 this last week as one of the most used parks, particularly at this time of the year, from people across the city and across, well, it is a popular, you know, it's a popular park, used by not just from citizens of Sheffield, but across North East Derby field. And so there is a case for, you know, the contributions from the other wards towards supporting funding, towards the restoration of the Rose Garden, to get it up and running as quickly as possible. Don't think there's water being...
Chair. Thank you councillor Auckland, councillor Basharat?
Thank you. I just want to say, first of all, you know, thank you for bringing this to the light, and I think seeing the passion and the number of attendance, and also everyone who spoke, you can clearly feel, you know, the, how much of an impact this has had. And for me, just while this was in discussion, and when I heard about it, obviously I've used the park and been taking many groups to the park as well, so I'm familiar with the level of positive impact it's had, and comparing it out since being a councillor to our Mount Pleasant Park, and it was something that I looked around and I thought we could do with some sort of cafe like that. Because like some lady mentioned, when you do the walks and stuff, it's just nice to be out in the park, have a cup of tea, and then just get on with a bit of walking. So just, it's such that it's come to this, and again, like somebody mentioned, I would also like to know a little bit more in terms of, you know, what happened. And somebody's mentioned, there is obviously a committee system where the, who leads on certain issues and stuff, so I think, if I can remember, I don't know who mentioned, but I think it's important to raise it there as well, see what can be actually done from there. Some of the questions that have been raised, they can be raised there and get those answers. But I think the biggest thing for me here, I understand money is a big issue everywhere, since stepping in and understanding our sil, money and everything, but I don't see why we can't just have a discussion. I'm not saying that we probably can, but as you can appreciate, there'll be other similar situations with other community organisations who are putting things forward, but I think it's, it means a lot, especially how you've actually put it across and how it's actually used citywide. So it's not just Graves Park, even though it's not my area, but I feel strongly about it, especially because of the level of impact it's having on people. And I think any community space which is being added value to people's health and wellbeing should be looked into quite seriously, and I think here we've all proved that as well. So thank you for sharing that, but I will take that vote as well.
Thank you very much indeed.
Chair, is it a point of clarification, we're not presenting the petition tonight, are we presenting it to the full council on the 2nd of November?
Yeah, thank you. And councillor Auckland, Sue Auckland?
Yes, thank you. I think a lot of people here will know that we live local to the park. I walk in the park almost every day, I talk to people in the park about what's happened, and I don't really want to reiterate, go over things that have already been said about the history to it all, and how appreciative we all are of the open spaces, and how we all need somewhere to meet and to use as a community base. So one thing that, well, all of it concerned me, but what concerned me a lot was the way the staff in the cafe were treated. And I think that it was really terrible, really awful, that people were suddenly found out with 15 minutes' notice that that job was gone. A lot of those jobs are part-time, they're flexible to fit in with domestic arrangements, and it was an awful situation, and it's now 76 days. Now, I understand that negotiations are ongoing with Brew Kitchen, but I would like to ask the officers present to try to ensure that those negotiations keep going, that people are kept informed about what's happening, and that from what we've heard, I'm not sure how quickly this cafe is going to be able to reopen, and we do have to look at an alternative provision. There has to be something in the park for park... There has to be something in the park where park users can meet. And I just want to ask the officers to make sure that those negotiations keep going and that information is fed back, so that these 12 people know what is likely to happen to their jobs in the future.
Thank you, I'm going to say the nought, I was getting nervous, there's a commitment to that, so thank you. Councillor Rove.
Yeah, I mean, it is terribly sad to see what's happening at Grace Park and it's obviously mismanagement over many, many years. I am a bit concerned that other members in the room today talking, discussing about different monies being transferred over from different wards. I think that conversation really needs to, it needs to be a proper conversation to be had before myself or any of the members decide to take money from one ward and put it into another ward. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think from councillor Shaw and in Auckland's point of view, talking about the Sill money, I think obviously anything that goes through the lack has to go through that particular process. So obviously, we'll follow it to the letter. Thank you councillor Rick. Thank you for keeping us honest. So yeah, if I can just bring that to the close, I mean, I'd say I personally, obviously very supportive of the whole campaign, along with my colleague councillor Shaw, certainly look upon, you know, the Sill as something that is there to benefit people of Beechfin Greenhill and the park is a great benefit to the people of Beechfin Greenhill if they can get across that road. So yeah, absolutely, we want to do this. And I hope that you've had some of your answers, your questions answered tonight. And as I say, if there is anything you want to do, obviously there's plenty of other opportunities to get your, to put your questions to both the full council on the 2nd of November and the various committees that we have that will all be considering this discussion because it is absolutely at the top. So again, thank you all very much for coming and thank you. We're now going to move on to, well, I'm going to swap over the, very, very quickly. I mean, 20,000, all the rules being adhered to, obviously there are rules about how you can spend the Sill, where you can spend the Sill. But obviously, as I say, we've made that commitment from Grace Park and from Beechfin Greenhill. So as I say, obviously it's public money and we need to make sure it's spent properly. But as I say, the local councils, we can make the commitment currently tonight to do that. Thank you. So we've got to, so I'm going to swap the agenda around so that Tina can perhaps get off soon. If I can introduce Tina Weston, who is the Trading Standards Enforcement Officer. Yeah, grab anyone really.
Tina, do you want to swap with me?
Yeah, so Tina's going to give a presentation on Not Born Yesterday. There is a scam out there for everyone. If you don't believe you're going to get scammed, then I'm afraid you are. So please pay attention and Tina's going to tell us how we're not going to get scammed. Thank you.
Yes, good evening everybody and thank you for coming along and thank you for inviting me. I'm not going to take long with this, so I hope some of you will actually stay and sort of just consider what I'm going to say. Now, I work for Sheffield Trading Standards and have done so for 20-odd years or more and there are a lot of scams out there. Now, you know, there can be all sorts of scams, telephone scams, rogue traders, that type of thing. So the Not Born Yesterday campaign is something that we've developed to try and sort of raise awareness for everybody. Like you've just said, there's a scam for everybody. It doesn't mean that whether you're older, you're younger, you're a business or whatever, nobody's immune to being scammed, even me. It can take anything really, you know, for somebody to be vulnerable. It can take a life experience that goes, you know, wrong, health issues, lack of knowledge, things like that. There's a lot of things at the minute, especially things around sort of green energy, people really not knowing whether or not these companies are selling the right equipment or the right kind of things. The problem we get is the scams really emanate from telephone calls. I don't know if you've had them all, everybody gets them, I get them, anybody gets them, internet, telephone calls and doorstep callers. What we're trying to say to people is please be aware that somebody calling you up, trying to sell you something, no thank you, simply, no thank you. Do your investigations, do your checking. Somebody knocking at the door, trying to swap over your electricity, gas, that type of thing, that was a big thing at some point. Whether or not it is now, I don't know, but potentially it's, there's going to be a lot of scams going on. There's a scam for everything, basically. So be aware. Now, what I have done, I'm not going to keep you very long, I did have a sort of more, you know, detailed kind of presentation, but to be honest with you, it's quite late and people are wanting to get off. So obviously, you know, I want to keep it that little bit shorter. What I have done, and I think this is probably the thing that I want to get across, is left some of these little what we call Z cards, okay? And what it's got is a free phone number for you or anybody to contact to get some advice about any consumer matter whatsoever. So if you think you've been scammed, if somebody's trying to sell you something you're not sure what it's about, if you get a telephone call out of the boot and somebody's trying to sort of say, well, you owe all this money, which we do get a lot of that, then give somebody a ring, check it out first and that's where you can get your advice. Not only do we want you to get this advice for yourself, but we also want you to actually look out for your neighbours, your friends, your family and anybody, you know, that you're in touch with, please pass on this information. That free phone number is citizens' advice. If we need to get involved at Trading Standards, it comes through to us, we get everything. You can remain anonymous. If anybody's been scammed and they're worried about actually talking to somebody, please don't, because we don't judge anybody, because we listen. The scams are, you know, difficult to deal with, they cause a lot of stress, anxiety and that type of thing. We have ways and means of how we can advise people to stop, stop scams by telephones, definitely, internet and certainly doorstep callers, which we have a lot of, although they have declined in recent years. We have had a rise of nearly what was something like about 90%, up to 40% of people being scammed by telephone calls. It makes people worry about and anxious about answering the phone and it shouldn't be in your own home. That phone is yours for family, friends and to communicate in that way, not to deal with rogue traders or scam callers. So please, the number is on here, pick up the little Z cards as you're going out, pick up a few, pass them on, but talk to people and please contact us. So I'm not going to go on any longer than this because I know people are wanting to get off. But I also want to say that from my point of view, I've lived in this area all my life and Grace Park has been an everyday occurrence, so I've loved it very much. Hope things get sorted down, yes.
Yes, good advice, because I know I don't get called. The one thing you can do as long as people call, you know, when they tell you the name and it quite clearly isn't the name, then they have to, they may look again, but it is the change of name, right? That my telephone after I asked them about it, I saw, back to ability and I actually received it like that. But I had been using over the phone.
Yes.
By this big book.
Yes.
Right. I don't ask the question, was I born in England? And I quite looked and quite clearly, here I am, right? So I went past the police station down West End and I put this policeman up, I says, what have you been doing, a beautiful at the ball, by the way? He says, oh, what do you mean? I said, have you had any nasty problems? Quite clearly, yeah. He said, oh, where's she? I said, this, oh, an Indian person over the ball. I said, this, oh, the captain, I said, oh, now he said, you have to get her.
I think we're getting into anecdote now, I think.
Oh, if that means all the way down, I could have called them. You don't mean to open it, but it means knocking on my door.
Well, I wouldn't do that if I were you then, so thank you very much. Has anyone else got a question for Tina? Well, or Grant.
Oh, I find you.
That's a massively brilliant point, absolutely brilliant, because you're right, you should initially phone the bank and especially if it's to do with a credit card or any banking details, you must call the bank immediately. Because what they have the ability to do is stop those cards and stop those cards being used. Now, I can go on forever about, you know, how people get your details, how these things work, but we haven't got time for that unfortunately. You should, obviously from your point of view, it's concerning that you need somebody to talk to. Bank first, always, 24-hour helpline, you've got on the back of your card, you have a number, you ring them up, you tell them you've got a concern, they put a stop on your card, they put a stop on that payment immediately and the banks will do that, no problem. Then I would definitely contact, that's a free phone number, okay, but it's a citizens' advice that comes through to us, we'll always call you back, but that's a 9 to 5, Monday to Friday. You should call the police, definitely after that point. But once your cards have been stopped, they've been stopped and the bank there have done as much as they can to mitigate any kind of issue. My husband got his, my husband got his card scanned in Manchester Airport and within probably about two hours, it got about three different accounts opened for the hut, shopping kind of thing, that's within like two hours. He got back, he saw it, he cancelled the card straight away and it got done. If you're not into looking at your accounts there and then or on a regular basis, it can happen, it's card scanning. There's a lot of this about, and as I said, I could go through this, you know, it'd take me ages to go through the kind of things that happen. But the main thing to do is if it's involving a card, involving your bank, 24 hours, customer service, straight through, cancel those cards, work from there on out.
Grant, thank you, I've got a question just there and then follow-up on you. Sorry, you first?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Hi, just on the, I've got a quick question and a point to make, on the banking, would you recommend the use of mobile phone banking apps because you can check things easily or do you think that presents a risk if somebody gets your phone or whatever? That's my question and then I've just got a quick point after that.
Yeah, the banking apps, I use a banking app and they're absolutely secure. Having worked with NatWest and a lot of the banking organisations, they have a lot of protocols in their sort of organisations that are to do with cashback, chargebacks for fraud and that type of thing. My app is absolutely brilliant, I've never had a problem with it. If there is a problem, then you contact your bank immediately and use them from there. But I've, the encryption on the bank apps, and again, the banks will probably go through this a little bit in more detail than I can because it's obviously their security, but they are very, very, very secure. So yes, the banking apps are great and you can check your account daily and it's quite easy to do. Obviously, not everybody can do that and going into the bank on a regular basis or trying to get telephone banking set up so at least you can check your balances and things like that, it's really hard because I'm quite happy to use an app, I'm quite happy to use my mobile phone, that's not everybody's preference and it really is difficult, shall we say, for some people that are maybe a bit concerned about using those. So yeah, I get that, but you need to be in touch with your bank on a regular basis, definitely.
Yeah, and just so, there are still old-fashioned scams like my uncle got, you know, conned by some builders and walked to the cash machine and cash out, that kind of thing. But my other point was there's also more modern scams, texting scams, social media scams. Somebody I know, I actually spotted it, his Twitter account was cloned and it looked like he put out a post saying that his house burnt, the boat had burnt down and somebody, you know, you know, people offered him money. So he didn't even ask, you know, the fake him didn't even ask for money, people started offering him and then he's like, oh yeah, you can pay for me. None of it was him, I kind of spotted it and, you know, so well-meaning friends have given this fake person something, so just, you know, there's a whole range out there, aren't there?
Unfortunately, yes, there are, it's massive and it comes down to people contacting us, I think if they've got an issue, because it is very personal and the range of scams can go on and on and on. And it can be, local authorities have been scammed, it can be solicitors, accountants. You know, if I'm feeling vulnerable, not necessarily through illness or anything, but through lack of knowledge or something, I can be very vulnerable, so can anybody, anybody here can be vulnerable. So it's, you know, we have to really be very aware. And with the telephone calls and things like that, there are systems you can put in place which we can give advice on and which we use with adult safeguarding and the police, which are extremely good at call blocking, but don't buy just anything, you need to get advice. And again, that's where the number comes in.
Thank you, I've got you there and then I think there was somebody at the back there and then I think Meg probably likes coming after that, thank you.
It's Caroline Dura again. Just a couple of observations about what you said and just to add to what you said about telephone calls. And I'd just say, if you are going to ring your bank, if it were me, I would want to make absolutely sure I was disconnected before I spoke to anybody on the bank, on the line, because what a lot of scammers do now is they pretend they've gone away and then you think you're ringing the bank and actually they're still on the line and they put somebody else on who speaks with a very good English accent and they will deal with your situation. The other thing that I would recommend that you get, when you said about your husband being scammed with this card, you could buy like a little credit card that you keep with your credit card and it stops it being scanned. And the final thing I would say is, I'm still not confident enough to use my phone on mobile banking, because my husband used to be an IT technician and whatever people can create, other people can scam. And when I'm using my mobile phone, that is a And when I'm using my mobile phone, that is a mobile signal. If I use my computer at home, it comes down a wire and it's much more difficult for them to get in there unless I give them permission to go on my phone and when they or go on my computer. And when they ring me up and ask me for access to my computer, I tell them I'll go and log on to my computer and then I put my phone down and leave them waiting and I go and do something else. And the last time, the first time I did it, it was 25 minutes before they finally gave up. Last time was only nine, so I think they're getting the message.
Hello, I'm Tina Wright. I just want to tell you about one that I had that I know has been going around and that was, my son works away and I got a text message where he usually uses WhatsApp and it said, Mum, I broke my phone, I'm contacting you from a friend's phone, can you ring me on this number, which I knew wasn't his number. So I gave him a phone, a phone call on his phone and he said, no, Mum, I haven't done that. But if I ever done, then I would have been in trouble following that phone number. Also, I heard this morning on a police thing, I can't remember the number they gave out though, but if you have a text that you're sure isn't genuine, like the one about the government grants, which is going about, and they give you a link to click on, you don't think that's right, there is actually a number you can forward that to, I don't know if you know that number, but I just can't remember the number they gave out this morning.
No, we do have that.
Yeah, sorry, I think those were brilliant points to be made, absolutely fantastic. It just shows you the level of the scams that you get. Now, I mean, with the banking, it's it's how you feel about it. I know the encryptions and stuff like that they use are pretty good, but like anything, there's always a way round, there's always somebody there trying to work round things. And with like the telephone calls and things like that and using like ringing your bank, like you said, putting the phone down, making sure they've hung up, never ever ring a number that somebody's giving you over the phone, always ring the number on the back of your your card. The simple thing is, is like you don't trust anything that comes through, it's no thank you, no thank you, get a call blocker. Somebody comes to your door selling something, no thank you, ring us if you're worried, if you get something on the phone you're not sure about, again, no thank you, give me your details, check it out with us before you reply, simply put the phone down. With internet, it's again a minefield, very difficult and again, it could take ages to go through the security protocols. Actually, the university students at Sheffield were brilliant at doing a little seminar for us, so it'd be absolutely great for for us to go through that again. But, yeah, it is really difficult and we haven't unfortunately got enough time at this moment in time for me to go through things and, you know, like the sort of types of scams that that we have. I mean, what I would like to do in future is maybe sort of get some more specifics and go through something a little bit more specific like internet banking. For instance, a lot of the banks now will do, people that come out and do a chat about how the banking works and that's from a bank point of view and they're really good at it. But what we'll do now, if there's any more questions, fine, but if anybody wants to get adverse advice on on anything, there's a telephone number, free phone, mobiles and landline and our email address. But, you know, hopefully, it's just trying to raise that awareness. So I'll leave that for now because we've had a long evening.
Great.
Thank you.
And thank you all very much indeed, Tina.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were going to have a presentation on our Southland Community Plan and I think we'll leave that for next time. So really, it just leaves it for me to thank you all very, very much indeed for attending and for getting involved in our local area committee. I hope you found it useful. If you haven't signed up for our mailing list, please speak to one of our officers on your way out. Next meeting, 12th of January, somewhere in Glens Valley.
These are on, oh, sorry, these are on the back, by the way.
Yep, grab yourself some of these at the back.
Sorry, Anya, I'm your.
No worries, no worries, cheers.